We call to order the regular board meeting of the Board of Supervisors. It's Tuesday, April the 25th, 2023. It's a little after 10:00. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane, Disney. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And if you would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I am. And in the Republic of which is standing.
Thank you, you may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting, and the Board may vote to recess into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We begin again with the roll call. District one?
Crosby's here.
District two Supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Judd is here.
Supervisor Judd is available, so we do have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 975-828-756-POUND. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item, or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the Board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, and that this means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. We begin with the call to the public, and these are the ones for today. Um, we have several. So the regulations are, we have three minutes. You need to come to the microphone, or if you're online, we will allow you in. You have three minutes, and all of these requests need to be about something that is not on the agenda today. So I'm going to call the first three, if you would get ready to speak, in the interest of time. It is Francis Alvarez, first, Jeff Sturgis, second, and John Dorsey. So we begin with Francis Alvarez. I can't see if this is in person or online.
She's in person.
Name and address, and then your three minutes will start.
Thank you. My name is Francis Alvarez. I live in Hereford, Arizona. Good morning, thank you, Board of Supervisors. I am here to say no to the demolition of the Miracle Valley Bible College and the buildings thereon. The tabernacle there holds great significance to very many around the world, and even Mr. Coxworth himself testified to that after our last meeting here, that many times in a short time that he has been there working, he has had to stop his labors to allow folks to walk the grounds. People still come there. The tabernacle is not an eyesore, but rather an inspiration to so many, as they have received hope, courage, strength, healing even yet today. Miracle Valley actually was on the map because of the Miracle Valley Bible College. Yes, we have had many an opportunity to rebuild, but have not, many have had the opportunity to rebuild, but have not yet been able to do that. But that shows that there is a great interest in keeping it just as it is, as it should be. Urban Line Decker's father designated that property to his son, Urban Line Decker, and Urban Line Decker felt that he heard from God to give that land and designate it to be a Bible school or a Bible training place for young people, that they could learn there and be trained there and then go out from there. Urban was a young man in his 30s, late 30s, when he felt he heard from God. That's pretty powerful, because to give that much property away and designate it, it's like a will. When you leave something to somebody, you hope that you've left it in good hands. That hasn't been exactly the situation here. And you hope that it will be carried out to your wishes and your will. So when Urban Line Decker felt that God told him to designate this land, he said, "I give this land composed of nearly two square miles and be in my ranch for the perpetual use of a Bible school until Jesus comes." And that was in January of nine, 1958. And I know that many have designated property, lands, all kinds of things, and they are not able to stand up and testify for themselves or fight for themselves. Perhaps they've gone on, such as Urban Line Decker. But they do that in good standing, hoping and believing that somebody will stand up and fight for their rights, that somebody will stand up and voice what that will or their deed represents, and see that it is carried out. And so I just ask this morning that you reconsider, and don't demolition those buildings there. They mean a lot to a lot of people. I've had a lot of folks calling.
Your time is up. And next one is Jeff Sturgis.
Hi.
Yes, Jeff, are you online?
I'm online, and I'm from Sierra Vista. I want to address the most pressing issue affecting the integrity of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors, and thus the county government, overall election integrity, and democracy itself. We need to rid ourselves of the main causes so much chaos and embarrassment to our county government. One county official has done more harm than any other, and is subject to a potential recall election. This official has initiated fruitless battle against the legal advice of our Republican county attorney and his deputies, along with the advice of the Arizona Secretary of State. This official's actions have now burdened Cochise County taxpayers with about $190,000 in legal and law enforcement fees, even though this official campaigned on the slogan that this official was the taxpayer's champion. This official harassed our former Republican election director, causing her to resign. This official sued her, in fact, for refusing to do what she judged was illegal. This official disobeyed a superior court judge's order certified a 2022 election. Had this official succeeded, the vote of Republican voters would have been disenfranchised, putting a Democrat in office instead of a Republican, for example, if the district's U.S. representative. This official violated the Arizona state's open meeting laws numerous times. If this official wants now to identify herself or himself, perhaps in another violation of the open meeting law, she or he is welcome to attempt to justify her or his actions. Otherwise, if this official cared about the integrity of our county government, county taxpayers and election integrity, this official would resign now. And if this official lacks decency and courage to identify herself or himself as the perpetuator of these hypocritical and destructive actions, I encourage other Cochise County officials, other county employees, and all other patriotic registered voters in this official's district to sign this official's recall petition. Thank you. And why don't you guys help that poor guy who comes before you and doesn't want county vehicles going down his road if the county won't fix his road? That's pretty pathetic. Thank you.
Next is, I'll call three names again, John Dorsey, Willie Navarro, and Rebecca Allen Jones. So we begin with John Dorsey, Zee in the room. Start with your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes. You need to speak into the microphone for the record.
Sorry about that. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is John Dorsey, and I'm from Amarillo, Texas. We used to live out here at Miracle Valley in 96 and '07. The reason for us being here is because we do want to voice our opposition to the demolition of the buildings on the Miracle Valley Bible College campus, which of course includes the tabernacle. We wanted to be out here so badly that my wife and I took our time off from work this week and traveled from Texas just to be here for this meeting today. My father actually worked directly for A.A. Allen and knew him personally from 1967 until 1970, which was when Brother Allen passed away. My father also knew Gene Martin, who he interested, who says to personally in 97 in Sierra Vista. He knew Don Stewart, who also worked with Brother Allen. He knew R.W. Shambock. My father actually worked in the Pool of Bethesda as one of his jobs there at Miracle Valley, where he would work with the patients and take the sick over to the tabernacle to be prayed for by Brother Allen. And in his three years there, he actually witnessed countless salvations, healings, and deliverances on that property. He loved the property so much that in 1970, when he actually left Miracle Valley, he would return periodically to view the land just to look at the property. We, in doing that, would come back along with my father in 96, which was actually October of that year. And he had met Marvin Richardson, which also worked for Brother Allen in the '60s. And Marvin Richardson was actually trying to purchase the land at that time, in October of 96, in the Hispanic American Assemblies of God. He was the head pastor at that time, and we became the associate pastors. My mother was the secretary of Miracle Valley. We lived on the property for over a year. I, at the age of 15, actually became the 15-year-old who would play the piano and be the landscaper out there at the property. My mom, she was also the praise and worship leader along with my sister. So we hold this property very near and dear to our heart. Even Brother Allen, before he died, or about six months before, he said that he saw that Miracle Valley would become a ghost town and that the buildings would become dilapidated, but that there would be a worldwide revival breakout before the return of Jesus Christ. So I would love to see Miracle Valley restored. I would love to see that ministry restored, because even Brother Allen said that the latter will be greater than the former. And in all of this today that I have said and presented before you today, Board, I would ask that you take it into careful consideration not to demolition buildings. And also, I would like to, if I could, quote from Romans 8:28, which says that "All things work together for the good of them who love God, and to them who they have called according to his purpose." Thank you very much for your time, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. The next person is Willie Navarro.
Good morning, county supervisors and ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today.
Your name and address first, please.
My name is Willie Navarro, 408 West Kebab Way, Cochise, Arizona, 85606. And I'm here to challenge or challenge the Cochise County zoning regulations, which I believe it is faulty, deficient, and ill-defined. It's prone to confusion, manipulation, leading to unfair, unjust decisions. Article 13 LI, Light Industry, and Article 14 HI, Heavy Industry. Zoning districts both encourage accesses to major districts and highways, and address concerns about pollution to electrical supplies, noise, odors, and other environmental nuances in their purposes, and not, again, and not, for rural zoning. Now, for RU4 ZONE, allowing for special use for industrial manufacturing other than serving the agricultural needs of the residents, if the residence should be, it should be removed. I, I review that, and it just doesn't bode to fit in for rural environment. It belongs to Article 13 or 14, where Kebab Manufacturing is one, what we are talking about this morning. This industrial manufacturing belongs not in residential area. Thank you.
Rebecca Allen Jones? Is she available in person or online? Rebecca Allen Jones?
Hi, I'm on the phone.
Yes, could you speak up a little, Rebecca, and give us your name and address? And you have three minutes.
Hello, good morning, nonchalant supervisors. My name is Rebecca Allen Jones. I spoke to you on April 11th regarding the Miracle Valley Bible College property. I appreciate you pausing demolition of the dome church building for your legal responsibility to meaningfully consult with the State Historic Preservation Office in compliance with Arizona Statute 11-268G. My great-grandpa founded the town of Miracle Valley. I'm consulting with the State Historic Preservation Office and providing undeniable evidence of the way in which this property was key in helping start civil rights movement, along with its global contribution to the significant period of Christian history. My nonprofit organization, Miracle Valley Oasis Center, is offering a viable solution for the county to ensure the property not only continues to be used as a biblical training center, but also can help the community turn a leaf for a positive season with opportunities, jobs, and facilities for all. Arizona Statute 401-862 states, in cooperation with the State Historic Preservation Officer, each state agency shall establish a program to locate inventory and nominate to the Arizona Register of Historic Places all properties that are under the agency's ownership or control, and that appear to meet the criteria for inclusion on the register. Each state agency shall exercise caution to assure that the property is not inadvertently transferred, sold, demolished, substantially altered, or allowed to deteriorate significantly. The State Historic Preservation Officer has already indicated that the property appears to meet the criteria for inclusion on the register, and that is why a consultation is required. Two buildings have already been demolished under the direction of Dan Coxworth, which was operating outside the statutes. I urge you to exercise caution with this property to ensure that not only are no more buildings altered or demolished, but also that you urgently better secure the property to ensure no more trespassers further deteriorate the property significantly. Dan Coxworth has stated to the State Historic Preservation Officer and to the press that the property is a threat to life. Our contractor asked him how it came to this conclusion, if there's been a structural engineer's report to back up this claim. Dan replied that no such report would be requested and refused the offer of our team to pay for an independent party to do this. Dan Coxworth is not a structural engineer, has no experience with construction. We contacted him with a viable interest in the property to purchase, and we refused access to the property, calling us tourists. I urge you to demand credible evidence from Dan Coxworth so he is no longer able to misrepresent his opinions with facts to sway your decisions and to put this matter on the agenda in the next Board of Supervisors meeting for proper discussion, and to recognize your legal responsibility to steward the safekeeping of this entire property during your ownership with no alterations or deterioration occurring on your watch. Thank you very much.
The next three will be Alfred Kern, George Adams, and Allison Morris. We'll begin with Alfred Kern.
Hey, how you doing again? My name's Delford Kern. I live at 3460 East Screenwash in Douglas. And specifically, I want to start by saying, Tom, pay attention. Stop looking at your papers and pay attention to what people are up here talking. Appreciate it, thank you. I've been coming to your meetings since February of last year. That's, uh, what, 14 months? Nothing has been done. I don't know what your problem is, but get over it. Whatever your problem is, get over it. Because our roads are getting worse. I mean, they're, it's getting to the point where they're just about impassable. Uh, Cochise County, County Supply, delivering propane. They don't want to come back up on the roads. I says, and when they stop, nobody can get propane up there. Um, like I said, I've been coming for 14 months. Nothing's been done. Figure out what the problem is, and get something started, at least. We have roads back there that have no homes on it that are being graded. We have over 30 homes back there, and they don't touch it. Usually, after each meeting, I'll, uh, the next day I'll go out, and there'll be three road graders on roads, on the roads Cipriano, San Medrone, or Medrone, and Mateo. There's nobody there. If we got to drop a road, drop the roads that there's nobody that lives there, and put on a road where there's 30 homes on it. It's not rocket science. Figure it out and get it done. Like I said, I've been coming here for 14 months, and nothing has been done. You know, you know, I gotta, I gotta say that for the past 13 months, you almost haven't been listening. Start listening. I know, Tom, you, you had, uh, were playing with your papers yet last, at the last meeting, and you weren't paying attention to anybody.
Your time is up. George Adams, next?
My name is George Adams. I live at 3368 East Getlows Road in Douglas, just next door to Fred. I was here a few months ago, requested a meeting with Richard, I believe, and Jackie, and to discuss this road situation. And I went to the meeting, I, the preempt of the meeting was, I need to figure out how to get this done without everybody coming here. And when I walked into the meeting, the first thing that was told to me is, you got to spend $100,000, you know, chip seal the road and do all of this, you know? And I told him, no, you don't. The rules say that's only new construction. So that told me at the beginning of the meeting, I'm trying to be deceived, pushed aside. And that's not what government is about. I sent a five-page email to Ms. English. My server told me that she received it. I never got a read receipt, but she may not have got it, because, you know, spam and that good stuff. I've called a couple of times since then, no request. We're currently installing traffic counters on these roads. We're going to get Freedom of Information Act to get to cost of grading these roads, and we're going to tell you what it costs per car, per road. And we're going to push that up the food chain, even to the state level. This, if you're not spending the money correctly, that's wrong. And we're going to bring that to light. I don't want to do any of this stuff. There's so many people living out there, traveling, county principal. Their cars are being destroyed now. All right? The county is out there, as much as we drive the road, have no idea why. The roads that aren't being traveled, there's no state property back there that needs access. So there is something going on. Government at this level is even as bad as it is at the presidential level right now. I just want someone to call me, tell me, let's talk, let's tell the truth. If there's reasons, tell us. That's all I ask. And I'm not a person to come here every 14 or 14 months like Fred's. I will take action, and I will take the correct action. Thank you very much. Thank you.
The next speaker is Allison Morris, and I believe it says they'll be on Microsoft Teams. Are you available, Allison?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Chair, can you hear me?
Um, it's a little garbled. Maybe if you move back from the microphone a little?
Is this, is this any better? Is this any better now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Good morning, my name is Allison Morris, and I'm from Portal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I want to make it very clear that I do not oppose payment of our county's debts as the minutes erroneously reflect from the special meeting of February 14th. Yes, I did speak out against the payment of warrant number 60237 for over $88,000 to the Elias Law Group, but my opposition had to do with how the bill was paid, with monies taken from the general fund. In other words, from Cochise County taxpayers' pockets. At that earlier meeting, I said supervisors Crosby and Judd are the ones who should be held responsible for two reasons. One, it was their actions that triggered the expanded hand count lawsuit. And two, they have promised Cochise County citizens that there would be no cost to us. The issue I have with that earlier warrant is the same that I have with today's warrant, number 61424, for about $23,000, again to Elias Law Group, and warrant number 61356 for a little over $8,000 to the Arizona County's insurance pool. The former had to do with Crosby and Judd's refusal to canvass our election results, and the latter had to do with the departure of Elections Director Lisa Mara. As we all know, the number one reason listed in Ms. Mara's letter of constructive discharge was, and I quote, "Supervisors Peggy Judd and Tom Crosby filed a lawsuit against Ms. Mara in her personal capacity for refusing to violate Arizona laws and brought the lawsuit in violation of open meeting laws," end quote. Most definitely, the demands that I am referring to here today totaling over $31,000 need to be paid, and I absolutely want them to be paid. Please do not misquote me again in the minutes. But these debts arise from the misconduct of supervisors Crosby and Judd, so they are the ones who should be held financially responsible, not us. We citizens have done nothing wrong to incur these debts and should not be punished for these lawsuits. Apparently, supervisors Crosby and Judd have forgotten the promises they made to Cochise County taxpayers, and now we are looking at a total cost of close to $200,000 due to their unethical behavior and unlawful actions. Thank you for your time.
Uh, next, we have two remaining. First is Sandy Truel, and then Ronald Mowen.
Hello, Sandy Truel from Sierra Vista. I'm asking for a delay in the jail tax election until the election system is no longer illegal. The current election system is violating my civil rights and is using illegal equipment and processes, as we have seen in the irrefutable proof from the presentation last month regarding all the problems with the machine tabulators. No election should be conducted until it is completely redesigned to ensure we have a legal election process, which can be legally certified by the Board of Supervisors. The May election for the jail tax must be delayed until there is a legal system in place, which will ensure full custody, full chain of custody, and verifiable identity for all mail-in voters. No machines used to count, or record, or report the results. This needs to be added to the agenda for a discussion and action on repairing and restoring our election integrity. And I have a quote, "The truth is incontrovertible. Malice may attack it, and ignorance may deride it, but in the end, there it is." Thank you.
Where are we? Name and address first, please.
My name is Ronald Mowen, 1818 East Apache Point Road in Hereford, Arizona. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for this opportunity to speak before you today. Honorable ladies and gentlemen of this, of this council, of this supervisors' board, I just wanted to let you know on behalf of Miracle Valley Oasis Center, my wife and I reside in Hereford, Arizona. We've been here since 2016. We've been a part of Miracle Valley since 2018, when it was under the stewardship of Louis Bettencourt. I realize you may, may have or have concerns about the future of the Miracle Valley property. We have been invited to join the Miracle Valley Oasis Center, and wholeheartedly agree with their vision. We do this without fear because of the heart of the history, our history for Miracle Valley. You've heard a lot of that today already. It's not a leap of faith that we're taking with this, it's a step of faith. We wish to see their vision presented to you so that you too may step away from fear and take the time required by law to fulfill and fully vet all claims and concerns. While I personally do not have all of the answers, I believe by taking the proper time, as accorded by law, for each of your concerns, they will be completely addressed. We want to work with you with complete transparency, and my prayer is that you will enter into partnership, step forward with the vision of Miracle Valley Oasis Center, and, and make this a palatable, a palatable reality for us all. Thank you very much.
Um, I did have one individual who wished to speak on an item that is on our consent agendas, and we do not remove items from the consent agenda unless one of the board members asks to do so. So that person was given the opportunity to speak on the call to the public. We now have the consent agenda, which is items one through three. Is there a motion?
Ma'am Chair, I move, we accept consent agenda items one through three.
Accept and approve.
Accept and approve.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, so it's unanimous and so ordered. We now move on to public hearings. uh, public hearings. Um, the first one is through Development Services, and if I could get a motion on the floor so that we can have discussion during the, um, public hearing.
Madam Chairman, I move that we adopt zoning ordinance twenty-three oh seven to rezone parcel one one seven dash zero four dash one one six A from SR forty-three, single residential, one dwelling per forty-three thousand square feet, to RU four rural, one dwelling per four acres, pursuant to the application of Mr. Randy Landwirling.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I'm going to open the public hearing for this ordinance twenty-three oh seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Board. Excuse me. We do have a request for rezoning from SR forty-three, which is one dwelling per forty-three thousand square feet. Excuse me, to RU four, which is one dwelling per four acres. The applicant is Mr. Randy Wurland. Uh, I do believe he is going to join us via Teams today, but unless uh, questions were by the board, he did not have anything to add to the presentation. Um, it is a growth category D, rural areas. Um, it is designated rural by the plan. Uh, it is in the Mid-Silver Springs Valley Community Plan, existing uses, it's vacant. Uh, and the applicant is hoping to build a single-family home on the property. Uh, at the meeting of April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval, uh, to the board of this item. It's located on the northeast corner of South Garden Road and March Street in the Sun sights area. Um, parcels have recently been combined, and so the new parcel number is one one seven zero four one one six A, and it encompasses four point three eight acres. Uh, this is just a photograph that the applicant included, what he would like to build out there. Uh, the site plan, which is included in your packet, shows a single-family home as well as a detached shop uh, that would be larger than the residence. Uh, that is, um, one of the reasons why the applicant has requested rezoning is that the SR zoning requires all detached structures to be subordinate to the residence. Uh, the shop that he would like to do would be larger. Some photographs of the existing sites, uh, and the roads in the area. Uh, we do have two factors in favor of approving, and that is that complies with eleven of the applicable rezoning factors used by staff to analyze the request. And the request would be in keeping with the rural character, uh, and existing development patterns of the area. We have no factors against approval. Um, staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any board members have any questions or comments? Yes, Tom?
Yes, for future reference, you said subordinate means that the accessory structure is smaller than the dwelling.
Correct.
Any questions or comments, Ms. Judd?
No.
Okay, I, I think the, um, recommendation is clear, and I, I don't have any questions, so I'm going to, uh, close the public hearing. I didn't have anyone else who wished to speak. I didn't get any notice from Mr. Landwirling that he's had any other comments, so uh, the public hearing is closed. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. So I'm going to now call for the vote unless there are any other comments. Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Okay, next we have, um, another public hearing. Uh, I, I'd like to have a motion on the floor for zoning ordinance twenty-three oh eight.
Madam Chair, I move, we adopt zoning ordinance twenty-three dash oh eight to rezone parcels three zero two dash one one dash zero three two A and three zero two one one dash zero three two B from R thirty-six residential, one dwelling per thirty-six thousand feet to general business pursuant to the application of Mr. Dave Terry.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, and so I'm going to open the, uh, public hearing on, uh, zoning ordinance twenty-three oh eight.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a request to resound from residential R thirty-six to commercial, general business. This will legitimize a auto impound yard that is a permitted use in general business. Can I advance this, Tim, or? The property is located at, uh, six one eight North Central Avenue in Bowie. Uh, the two parcels combined are two point two one acres. Um, the comp plan designation of this property is developing, which does allow for a property to be rezoned to commercial or GB. The surrounding zoning of the property is R thirty-six with a mix of uses. To the west is a cemetery, to the east is primarily vacant, property owned by the Bowie School District. To the south is a residence, which is owned by the applicant, and to the north is also a residence. Couple pictures of the site. Staff mailed notices to surrounding property owners, uh, within three hundred feet. We posted the property and, uh, put a legal notice in the service to Harold. Uh, the department did receive one letter in support. This request does comply with fourteen of the applicable rezoning factors used by staff to analyze this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this, um, request at their April twelfth meeting. Staff does also, um, support this and recommend the approval of this request. There are, there is one condition that we are recommending. Um, the Analyzing and Zoning Commission is recommending is to screen the north and east property boundary, and the applicant is requesting a waiver to the screening to the south property boundary, which is the property he owns and where they live. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
And my assumption is the screening is for the residences that exist on the, uh, north and east?
The north and then the school district on the east side.
Okay. Um, this is a public hearing. Any board members have any questions?
None at this time. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Judd?
I, I don't. I just want to thank you for paying attention to Bowie and helping out the people out there. It's helpful.
Okay, we have no further questions, and I'll close the public hearing. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. So I'm going to ask if there are any further comments before I call for the vote. Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. We go to the, uh, next public hearing. I need a motion on resolution twenty-three twelve, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt resolution twenty-three twelve to select owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, emergency home repair as Cochise County's Community Development Block Grant, CBD, CDBG project, to forward to the Arizona Department of Housing for funding.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so I'm going to open the public hearing on resolution twenty-three twelve. And I believe Susan Bronson is going to give us some information.
Good morning. Uh, this year's Cochise County will receive approximately four hundred and ninety-eight thousand in CDBG funding. As a refresher, uh, CDBG is a federal grant program. It is administered by the Arizona Department of Housing. Tim, I think the remote is not advancing. Um, CDBG projects must meet specific criteria. They must either primarily benefit low-to-moderate-income persons, or they must eliminate slum or blight, or they must meet urgent needs of a health or safety issue. Not advancing. Um, in addition, the projects must be of a specific type. They may be either housing projects, public facility projects. They may be public service projects or planning projects. Eligible housing projects include owner-occupied housing rehab. It includes new construction by an eligible organization such as Habitat for Humanity. They include activities that support new housing construction and also homeowner assistance. Eligible public facilities include things such as roads, sidewalks, community centers, parks, sewer lines. Eligible public services would include things such as childcare, uh, job training, healthcare, and substance abuse, and also crime prevention. CDBG funds can also be used for community planning, such as, uh, funding a comprehensive plan. As previously mentioned, uh, Cochise County is scheduled to receive approximately four hundred and ninety-eight thousand in CDBG funds. Uh, a public hearing was held on February twenty-eighth, and we solicited comments from the public to help select a project. Owner-occupied housing rehab was recommended. And, um, that could be in the form of either grants up to fifteen thousand, or if, uh, we would like to exceed fifteen thousand, then that would be in the form of a forgivable loan. Uh, if the board chooses to select owner-occupied housing rehab as your project, we do have a resolution for adoption drafted. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or, or comments during this, uh, public hearing from the board?
Ms. Bronson, how would you like to receive referrals for potential projects?
There's a very specific, uh, process that has to be, uh, followed, is mandated by the Arizona Department of Housing. There has to be set criteria. It has to be, uh, there has to be outreach to the public. Uh, the selections would be non-bias. They would be based upon this criteria. And referrals would be based upon outreach through our website, through perhaps workshops, uh, flyers, and a number of means of getting the word out.
Okay, so if I had a constituent, well, I did have a constituent that contacted me about this grant, so what would be the next step for him?
Yes, uh, you would just refer them to the Development Services Department. At this point, of course, you all have not selected a project. We're not presuming that you will. We're, you know, letting that, uh, be your decision. And then we also have to have housing, uh, guidelines passed. It's, we haven't received the funding yet, so at this point, we can't select a, a person to be eligible for the funds. We don't have the criteria in place. But in a few months, if you all select this project, that would be possible.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, so should I email you with regard to a certain constituent's request?
That would be, that would be fine. That would be acceptable. We have received some emails already. Um, we have let people know that the project is not yet in place.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any comments during the public hearing, Ms. Judd?
No, ma'am.
Um, I, I have a comment, and, and we talked about this at the, at the public hearing, is it's available both in city limits and out city limits, so it's the entire county where this could be available, not just out in the county. So, um, today, uh, we're looking at passing the, um, resolution.
Madam Chair, I want, I should clarify that for you. Since we spoke with you all, we did receive additional information from the Arizona Department of Housing, and they said that is correct, as we were previously advised. It is available in the incorporated areas as well as unincorporated areas, with the exception of the city of Sierra Vista and the city of Douglas. And they stated that is because they're entitlement communities, and they have their own funding in place.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that, you know, to the attention of the public, because they do receive their own CDBG allocations
Yes.
in the city of Sierra Vista and the city of Douglas.
Yes, that's correct.
So those would not be available entities?
No, we did receive that information recently from the Arizona Department of Housing. We had previously been advised that the city of Sierra Vista would be included, but that's been clarified for us.
Sound record.
Yes.
Any other questions during the public hearings?
Bronson, you referred to a sample motion, and since your, uh, the equipment doesn't, doesn't advance, I looked at it in this, which is the equivalent of what you have on the screen, and I didn't see a sample mouth motion. Am I supposed to have a sample motion?
That I, I may have been remiss in not including that. We did give a sample, uh, draft of the resolution.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, we've already made a motion and have a second.
Yes, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the resolution. We, I think Tom was just looking for a copy of the resolution.
I, I was wondering if there was anything besides what we had printed on our agenda. Thank you.
All right, if there are no other comments, then I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, we do have a motion and a second. Um, any further comments from board members? Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered, so now we can get busy putting the process in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, another, um, public hearing. Uh, item number seven. Uh, and it is an appeal, which is a, a little different than the normal public hearing process. So, um, uh, I'd like to put a motion, um, on the floor. Let me see if I have speakers that want to speak on this.
Madam Chair, this is Supervisor Judd. I'm not sure that we can make a motion because it's going to either be to approve or deny the appeal. So it might be appropriate to do the hearing prior.
Well, I think before we have discussion, we have to have a motion, you know, according to our, um, past regulations, so, um, uh, hearing from the county attorney, we always need to clarify this, because when you have an appeal, it's, it's a little, um, strange whether you're voting for or against something. So I'm going to ask the county attorney to alert the board as to the, um, implications of for or against when we have an appeal.
Thank you. Uh, you can go ahead and have the presentation because you will then, after you have the presentation and the hearing, you would, can then make the motion whether you're going to approve or deny. The standard that you'll be using today.
Speak a little louder, please.
Yes, because after you hear the presentation and you have, you hear the hearing, then you can make the motion. You know, you have a discussion whether you're going to approve or to deny. And the, the standard that you'll be using today is whether the, um, the, the decision made by the zoning and planning commission was, uh, erroneous, arbitrary, capricious, or in a breach of discretion, because you're sitting in a quasi judicial capacity today.
Well, it's in the public hearing agenda, so my assumption is I need to open the public hearing
Yes, ma'am.
on this appeal for, um, SUA twenty-three oh two. The opponent is Willie Navarro. So I'm opening the public hearing, and I believe we have, uh, Christine McLaughlin, hunter two, to give us an explanation.
Thank you. This is an appeal case regarding a recent special use case, SU twenty-three oh five, which was a request to construct a manufacturing business on a rural zone parcel. At its regular March eighth, twenty-twenty-three meeting, the commission unanimously approved a request by Christopher and Gloria Beth Rush for a special use authorization to operate a manufacturing business not to exceed five thousand square feet on a five-acre parcel, APN two oh six two two one one five, in order, in unincorporated Cochise County, where indicated on the slide. In this case, Christopher and Gloria Beth Rush are the special use applicants whose use was approved by the commission. The appellant is Willie Navarro, a neighbor that is agreed to by this approval. It's his appeal request that you are considering today. And both the special use applicant and appellant are present today, and I assume would like to speak following my presentation. This is a concept plan for the proposed special use. The special use applicant proposed placing a prefabricated building in the southeast corner of the site to the rear of the house in which they live. They currently have a manufacturing business in Tucson, which they wish to bring here to Cochise County. There are ten factors staff uses to evaluate all special use proposals. In this case, eight of the factors applied. It fully complies, complied with five factors. It complied with conditions regarding three factors. And it's not uncommon for there to be factors for and against any special use. In those situations, the case planner typically recommends conditions to mitigate potential impacts. For this special use, we recommended entering into a private maintenance agreement for Kaibab Way, limiting the building size, height and color to help it blend in with the neighborhood, limiting hours of operation, mandating that all business must take place inside, and requiring an insulated structure with no outdoor storage. These were intended to help that make, make the business more residential and use in function. There are two requirements the board must consider evaluating appeals of special uses. The first is a claim that any part of the decision was erroneous, arbitrary, capricious, or an abuse of discretion. The second is additional testimony not considered by the commission. I'll start with the reasons provided why the appellant believes there was an erroneous decision. On this slide is a summation of the claims included in the appellant's application, which was submitted to the board. Specifically, the appellant disagrees the proposed use is in compliance with the zoning district purpose. The appellant disagrees with the county's adopted public notice requirements and/or feels it was not followed. The appellant disagrees with the county's adopted meeting protocol and rules of procedure with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and/or feels it was not followed. The appellant disagrees with statements made by the special use applicant in the application and/or at the meeting. The appellant claims, uh, there are health and environmental repercussions associated with the manufacturing of circuit cards. And in regard to the notice requirements and meeting recall, I do go into some detail about that in the memo because the commission's protocol is different from this board's. Also, we're required to follow notice requirements contained in section 171603 of the zoning regulations. The commission and the staff that serves us must follow the Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws and rules of procedure, which we did. And I'll also mention a county attorney reviews all commission memos and is present to assure we follow all legal requirements. Next, regarding additional testimony within the appeal, the appellant requests additional information regarding the corporate business profile and N I, and N A I C S codes. And when it comes to special use cases, we don't focus a lot of attention to these aspects. This is a quasi judicial land use decision. And it runs with the land. If it's current, the landowner has moved, a new landowner could move in, start a totally different manufacturing business. As long as they comply with the zoning regulations and their business fits within our definition for manufacturing, and they comply with additional conditions proposed by the special use, the new use could continue without a need for a new special use approval. There are two potential outcomes for your decision today. An approval would reverse the commission's decision and would not permit the manufacturing business. A denial would affirm the decision of the commission and would permit the manufacturing business. On this slide, I provide factors in favor of the appeal and factors in favor of an appeal denial. In terms of factors in favor, the appellant has submitted a rationale for why they feel the decision or any part of the decision was erroneous, arbitrary, capricious, or an abuse of discretion. In terms of factors in favor of the denial, it would overturn a unanimous decision of the commission and staff refutes claims of improper meeting protocol and notice. Staff recommends denial of the appeal, which would uphold the decision of the commission and attach the original conditions of approval to the special use request. Those are conditions were included in the staff memo. Now, I have included two sample motions on this slide. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. And again, I believe both the appellant and the original applicant are present.
I do have several people who wish to speak on item number seven. So stand by, we have three minutes. And we have people opposed and people in support. So I'm going to begin with those that are opposed. And Christopher Rush, Constance Ryan, Willie Navarro, and Cynthia Navarro. Each one of you have three minutes. If you would come to the microphone, give your name and address. You have three minutes to convince us.
Thank you, madam. I'm Christopher Rush. I live at 372 West Kaibab Way. We moved out there in September of 19. And I have been running a business down in Tucson for 25 years now, manufacturing maintenance components for the armed services. Our daily lives consist of sitting at a desk with small hand tools, assembling parts. Our machine parts are farmed out to machine shops where they complete the machining and the plating of them. They are returned to us clean. Same thing with our circuit cards. They are made to our standards and our design. They are brought to us as a raw card. We assemble the card, we solder the card, and we test the card. We absolutely love our area and we have no intentions on doing any kind of harm to the environment or the landscape at all. There, we have no problem, you know, maintaining the road. We, we could have just put up a building by ourselves and, which we had total right to and started a business in there. But we're here trying to do it the right way and we're asking for permission and not forgiveness. And I thank you very much.
Need to explain, when I say it's opposed, it means it's opposed to the-
Appeal.
Appeal, that we're listening to.
Yes, I oppose the appeal.
Thank you. The next one is in favor, Constance Ryan.
Good morning. I guess I gotta do this. Good morning. I think, I think I'm actually on the wrong, on the wrong side. I'm, I live on Kaibab Way. I have nothing against the Rushes. My objective to this is that we live in a rural area. We want it that way. That's the way, that's why we moved there. There's hardly no traffic. They, we have hardly no pollution. We don't have a lot of strangers and we don't want more of this coming to our area. I think it's not right to have a business put right in between residential homes. That's, you know, it's just scary. It's not something that should be done in a rural area. I understand that they don't want to drive to Tucson every day, twice a day. But in making it convenient for them, it's causing distress to the neighbors. I live alone. I, we have maybe, if we're lucky, 10 vehicles going up and down our road in a day. Now, there might be seven employees. There's going to be parties that they're advertising, that they're going to have parties for their employees with food and music. That's fine. They do have bonfires. I'm strictly against that. One little ember can cause a disaster. So turn this around, you board members, okay? If someone who doesn't live in your area decided to come to your area and put a business right next to your house, how would you feel about that? What I say is do unto others. Thank you.
The next speaker is Willie Navarro.
Thank you again, board. Let me start here with a couple of important guiding principles to remind all of us in the conduct of our business today. First, our duty to God, and second, our duty to our great country, United States of America. Respectably, Bible verse, Proverbs 21 verse 3, which states, "To do righteousness and justice is more acceptable to the Lord than sacrifice." Followed by the foundation of our democracy, a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. In, I'm Willie Navarro, 408 West Kaibab Way. I am a God fearing Christian, a contributor to the society, and a law abiding citizen. I proudly serve the United States Air Force on all levels of the government with a total of over 40 years. I'm here today to appeal for the county against the county's approval of Kaibab Manufacturing on the first meeting. I hope that this board listens to our inputs and honors and acknowledges the information presented, which are primarily impacting health and safety of the residents and peacefulness attributed to the installation of a manufacturing facility in this rural residential area called Zone RU4 of Cochise County. Reference Cochise County zoning regulations, RU4, is defined with a purpose to promote the health, public health, safety, and general welfare of the county residents. Folks, it's residents with S and not a resident, singular. That is a rationale of the proposal to reduce commute time. That's selfishness, very personal and weak. Come on, folks. Board, I ask you, please consider, think about that. Issues presented in this petition should not be taken lightly as it affects all of us for a long time. It will set a precedence. More follow, will follow, which will then totally ruin the peacefulness and rural livelihood and turn it into urban living, which we came here to avoid that. We've lived in urban living the whole life. For me serving in the military, it is time to get moved to a country, a place where we can live for the rest of the time. Especially, we handed this property, we named it to our children, one of which is currently serving the military. Folks, how can I explain to my son coming home, welcome home, son? You're coming from a battle that the air, that the military have served you.
You turn this up. Cynthia Navarro?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cynthia Navarro. I live at 408 West Kaibab Way. Before I start, I would like to clarify the letter dated March 24 by the Rush family that says that we don't own the property. It's name, actually, it's name for our children. But we paid that property in full from our, the parents' account. Okay, so I just want to say simple. I don't want to create animosity between neighbors and the county. I just want you to reconsider. We are not here in, we are here for the board of supervisors to rethink, reconsider the plea of the members of whom you represent. Not just one, but the majority. The oath you took after these people voted for you, that you make a rightful decision for them. In their behalf, our behalf too, your behalf, and your children's behalf. You, you all heard their true heart statements, their feelings verbally and in written. Please rethink. God gave us a conscience to do what is right and not, and know not to do what is wrong. Please think about that. And I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. God bless.
Thank you. I am- I have two here that wish that their names not be read. But they are in support and not speaking. Okay, we have a public hearing. Board members have any questions? I think that it's been clear from the presentation that we have two options of a motion at this time. One is to approve and reverse the decision that was unanimous decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission, or we can deny, which means that we are affirming the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision.
Madam Chair, before you move on to discussion, did you close the public hearing, please?
Do what?
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes, I called it a public hearing quite some time ago.
No, did you close it? After the speakers were done, did you close the public hearing?
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
So if there are not any more questions during the public hearing, then I'll close the public hearing. And now is the opportunity for, again, for us to ask questions if you have questions. I think the information has been given to us was clear.
We would like to speak.
I didn't hear that comment.
We would like to speak and don't see a way to ask for permission to speak.
I don't know who this is.
So if they can announce their names, we didn't receive any additional speaker request forms. But the person that's speaking, if you can introduce yourself and your address, please?
Yes, this is Alan and Nancy Thomas. We live at 311 West Kaibab Way. And all I can say is that this business will not serve the local needs and is not compatible with rural living.
Excuse me, sir, before you move on, you, in order to speak on this matter, you have to submit a request form. And I'll check with the clerk right now if we received a request form in that name.
I'm in the stacks here. Eleven. Eleven. Item seven. No, I only have the ones I have mentioned.
I had to second with the clerk and the chair of the board that no submission of a form to request to speak on this item was received. So therefore, unfortunately, sir, we cannot receive comments from you on this matter.
Okay, we need to follow procedures so that we don't get mixed up and, and mess things around so that we, so that the process is not clear. So that's why we're denying because we're very clear about the process of being able to speak to the board, either in call to the public or on an agenda item or during a public hearing. So I think that we have finished with the speakers that have given us information. I have closed the public hearing, but certainly open to board members at this time if you have any questions before you make a motion.
I have comments and I'm ready to make a motion if Madam Judd is not otherwise. Unless she wants to speak first, that would be fine, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, well, we'll offer Ms. Judd the opportunity. Do you have any comments or questions, Ms. Judd?
I have one comment and one question. My comment is that I have always preferred to, to have a business near my home or in my home. It, it tends for me to look at that, although I do listen to the neighbors and I know they're worried. And one of the things I, I heard mentioned that they're worried about that if they allow one business to come in with, with their, their activities and, and parties and building and all that. If they allow one to come in, then soon everyone on their street will want to have a business and it will be allowed. And I, what I understand is from the, the testimony by our developmental services was that it would be, have to be approved each time. This is just for this one property. There could be another business in that same building, but it would be just this property. Each property would have to be, I, I want to ask, will each property, if someone else wants to have a home business, will it have to go through the same process and planning and zoning?
If it is a rural zone parcel and they're requesting to do manufacturing, they would have to go through a similar process.
So it's not a blanket approval, it's approval of this pro, this process, this parcel?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
And you make-
Chair, yes, thank you very much. I understand the appellant is Mr. Navarro, who doesn't want manufacturing. And I support Mr. Navarro's right to appeal. However, it was unanimously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I read all the material and I thought the material was very thorough. I hope to provide the, the greatest property and economic use possible for everybody and their property. Therefore, I move to deny docket SUA 23-02, affirming the March 8, 2023 approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the factors in favor of the appeal denial constituting findings of fact.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other conversation, comments that need to be made? I think the public needs to understand that when we put a commission together, and certainly when we have all of them in favor of something, it would take a strong issue for us to change our minds on what they are suggesting to us. And apparently that has not been shown to us today. So we do have a motion for denial. I have a second. If there's no other comments, hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in-
And aye means denial.
Right, right. Want to make sure. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? We have all of the board wanting to deny the docket. And so it is so ordered that docket SUA 2302 is affirmed and denied.
Madam Chair, just for the record, we didn't hear your, your vote. You didn't vote.
You want me to say it again?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, I voted to deny. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Like I say, we want to keep the process clear here. All right. Let's see, next. Okay, we're going to action items now. Where is the Oaks? Okay, assurance agreement 12, so you guys sit a little while longer. All right, for the Board of Supervisors, action item eight. I would, I would like to ask the board, and so I'll make a motion to approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Two for the repairs of a bathroom in the large hangar at the BDI International Airport in the amount of $42,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you would like more explanation than, than what you have heard, this would allow that hangar, which basically is not rented out at this time, but used by Forest Service and their crews that come in to fight wildfires. And now they only have the use of the small bathrooms in the, in, in one building, and this would certainly enhance that. So if you have other questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I ask for your approval. Any questions? No comments, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered. Item number nine, I think that, Ms. Judd, would you like to make that motion, please?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move that we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Three. Community cleanup north of Benson on our Neuer Palooza Lane in the amount not to exceed $2,500. And just as an explanation, this is a, a small, a tiny part of the community north of Benson. One road, basically.
You've made the motion, stop there and let's get a second and then you can talk, okay?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
So this is just a few homes on one particular road. That's why it's fewer dumpsters, few, less expense. But it was the site of a wildcat dump site. And I feel we're fortunate to have the man come in and decide that he wanted to clean up that property and it's right on the main road. And it's, it needs to be cleaned up. And I think that we're fortunate that he's done that and is working on that. And then the neighbors are also kind of deciding they would like to clean theirs as well. So it's, it's good to help out getting some of those wildcat dump sites cleaned up.
Okay, certainly one of the, one of the options that we have for community development funds, and we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? If not, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered. Item number 10, this is a good idea also. Ms. Judd, you want to make the motion on this one?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Three. Wilcox Public Pool rebuild, specifically the water slide in the amount of $25,000. The Wilcox.
Wait, wait, let's hit to the second.
We need a second.
The second, okay, we, we have a motion and a second now.
The city of Wilcox has been needing to, actually, they performed a lot of work on this pool over the years as many public pools go. It was built in the seventies and it needs to be replaced. The city has secured some funds from the state, some other funding sources, and lots of community donations have gone into a complete rebuild on the pool. They asked if we would, as a county, would want to help a little bit. And I felt like this was a very good use of community enhancement funds, mainly because our pool serves the entire area, about 10,000, 12,000 people that come from outside the city and do things in town. And that is the public pool for county residents as well.
Okay. Any other comments, board members?
Yes, indeed. I'll just wait until Ms. Roberts gets comfortable and I'll ask her a question. We are talking about item number 10, rebuild the water slide in Wilcox. And I, and I understand that this is a city pool.
Yes.
Is, is there any problem with intergovernmental agreement with the city of Wilcox about this? Is this all squared away, ready to go?
I have not seen.
I guess I, I just.
It shouldn't be used in this city.
Did you have a comment, Madam?
Chair, maybe, yeah. Madam Chair, Supervisor Crosby, I have a comment. And so the whole pool is being rebuilt. We are going to get, are from my Community Enhancement Fund contributor water slide, which by the way, if we were all children once and you don't go to the pool unless there's some fun stuff to play on, it creates movement, it creates a reason to get up out of the water, get up off the, the cool deck and, and have some fun. And our kids need that.
Ms. Judd, if I could, if I could cut in here, I, I don't think the problem is with the idea. I think Mr. Crosby is simply trying to ascertain if we have an agreement with the city of Wilcox so that this money could be paid, because we can't pay unless there's some kind of an agreement. And apparently, the county attorney hasn't put that together yet, but that doesn't mean that they could not.
I have not received the request to put that together. We can put that together so that we can make this part of the donation from the Community Enhancement Fund available for use, because my understanding is this is going to benefit the community in general. But yeah, we would need to want to put something together. And I hadn't been asked to do that, but I can put something together for.
Okay, so we have a positive response from the county attorney that they can put together an agreement. They just hadn't been asked to do so yet in order to allocate money for the city of Wilcox. Is that satisfactory?
All right, it's, it's okay with me and I'm all for recreation and swimming and all that kind of stuff. So the next question would be, is it appropriate to table this to a future meeting? Until such IGA is created?
Madam Chair, that is agreeable to me, to, to table the meeting or to table the vote.
Do we need to table it in order to ask the county attorney to put together the agreement if we vote for this?
No, I think you can go ahead and vote for the item today. And I can present the agreement. I can put agreement together to, to go with it. I don't think you necessarily have to table this.
Okay. So the county attorney has said that we can go ahead to approve or deny this today. But if we approve it, then they will take the actions necessary for the paperwork in order for it to take place. Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other comments before I call for the vote? We do have a motion and a second. Hearing no further comments, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered. And ask the county attorney to put together the appropriate documents. Next, the County Recorder, item number 11.
County Chair, I move, we accept and approve the appointment of Bob Bartles Meyer as Elections Director for Cochise County.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have speaker request forms. I think it would be appropriate first for us to ask Mr. Stevens, since this is at your request to come forward.
Good morning, David Stevens, Cochise County Recorder. Pursuant to the IGA that the board and myself signed, Superior Court upheld, one of the jobs was to post and hire Election Director. I posted the job, I had three applicants. One of them had outstanding qualifications for this job, is, is, was up until last week, a current election director in another county of this state. So I would urge you to approve Mr. Bartles Meyer as our Election Director. And I'm available for any comments, questions?
Well, I, I personally have a few concerns as to knowing that the board had the ultimate decision. Why was no information ever given to the board as to what was going on during this process? And in fact, it was on the agenda before I ever saw a word about the, the gentleman. And I even had constituents, you know, contacting me about the background of this gentleman. And even in the documentation that was online for the board, did it not send up any red flags that this person did not want you to contact any former employers, except one that was probably 20 years ago?
Well, it's a lot of questions. Which one do you want to answer first?
Why did, was that not a red flag for you that?
No. Because I put that on other job applications too, where I didn't want them contacting my previous employer. So it really wasn't a red flag, no.
There's no reason that you think that there was something wrong? Is there a reason they wouldn't ask you?
No, it never crossed my mind to be something wrong. There are times people want to move for a better location or better job.
And did you, you took, you tell us that you knew that he was from another county, La Paz County in Arizona? Did you look more than just the conversations with you as to his background? And people have notified me of things that he has posted online and his ideas?
Well.
The 2020 election was not fair, the, you know, all of these things do not concern you?
Well, we had an issue with the current, or the, the former election director having issues with partisan politics also. I don't recall you having an issue with that.
What, what are you referring to?
Well, she wasn't going to hire specific people for poll workers last year. That made the, the press, the paper. I didn't see any comments coming from the board saying that that was unacceptable. Maybe I missed it, I didn't see it. So if you wanted to ask about postings, Mr. Bartles Meyer is here. You can ask him when I'm done. Any more questions?
Maybe later.
Excuse me?
I said maybe later. We have several people who wish to speak on this. Item number 11, opposed, we have 31 opposed that don't wish to speak and one in favor that doesn't wish to speak. And those who wish to speak. Our, we'll start with Jeff Sturgis. You have three minutes, Jeff.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista. I just learned that Mr. Bartles Meyer perhaps did never graduate from college. You can look into that one. After learning who Bob Bartles Meyer is, Bartles Meyer is, and what he has done, my first statement about the Board of Supervisors voting on hiring him to replace our previous election director, Lisa Mara, would normally be, you've got to be kidding. Yet, after all the chaos and embarrassment brought to Cochise County by Supervisors Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd, along with Recorder David Stevens, how could anyone be surprised by their determination to hire this nut job? As reported by Jen Feifield in her good article in Vote Beat, this candidate was chosen by the county return recorder who pushed for an illegal hand counting of ballots. Bob Bartles Meyer stated boldly on his Facebook page about the 2020 election. Listen to this. You will never convince me that that election wasn't stolen. Double exclamation points. Think about it. Our election director would be responsible for upholding Cochise County election integrity when he has maligned the integrity of hundreds, if not thousands, of election directors across the nation who assured their voters that they had correctly counted the votes of their voters. Bartles Meyer also spread false claims about Dominion Voting Systems, a manufacturer of election equipment. Yes, the company had just won close to $1 billion against the organization that spread the same false claims. Does Cochise County need another lawsuit over false claims? Do you think that someone who posts memes on his Facebook page like this one, Democrats are insane, or, or suggesting that the media should be shut down, will be fair and impartial as he handles the next election in Cochise County? Yes, he actually presents himself this way on Facebook. Look for yourselves. This is on top of his employment record. Bob has jumped from one election position to another. If he is hired by Cochise County, he will be leaving his present employer, La Paz County, in the lurch, as he did with Doña Anna County in New Mexico, just before one of their elections. No reason was given for his resignation, he just up and quit. What makes the Board of Supervisors and Recorder Stevens think that when push comes to shove, Bob will not leave Cochise County in the lurch? And an even bigger mess and embarrassment that it already has been through? Let sanity, good judgment and faithfulness to election integrity win for once in Cochise County. Vote no on hiring this election denier.
Time is up. Then. What's up? I'm a quitter. Al Anderson. And I believe that Al is online on Teams.
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, my name is Al Anderson. I'm a resident of Bisbee and I am opposed to hiring the proposed candidate because of his history of spreading false claims about election fraud. It's one thing for a person who holds a nonpartisan government job to have an opinion, but to spread lies widely on social media, knowing that it will only fuel doubts about our otherwise trustworthy democratic voting process, shows a lack of good judgment. It is also irresponsible for this Board of Supervisors to hire this candidate, knowing full well of his inappropriate character in instigating civil unrest. We had a great nonpartisan election director who was a Republican by the name of Lisa Mara, but you made life so miserable for her that she resigned. We now know that our past Republican Attorney General, Mark Brnovich, and his staff spent more than 10,000 hours diligently investigating every conspiracy theory under the sun here in Arizona, and they couldn't not find anything wrong with our elections. The recall Tom Crosby campaign has also shown that Cochise County Republican, Democrat and Independent voters are tired of hearing from the fringe group of election deniers. Cochise County voters are making a stand against electing and hiring election conspiracy theorists. They want to get back to having a functional, as opposed to this kind of dysfunctional governance. Thank you.
The next speaker is Allison Morris, and we get on Teams.
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Allison Morris and I'm from Portal. Thank you once again for this opportunity to speak today. I am vehemently opposed to the appointment of Mr. Bob Bartles Meyer as Cochise County Elections Director. Why would we hire a man who abandoned his former post as Elections Director in Doña Anna County, New Mexico, after just eight months of employment and right before a primary election? Now he is willing to ditch his current job as Elections Director in La Paz County after just one year of employment there? Perhaps it will be long before Mr. Bartles Meyer moves on to an even larger county, such as Pinal or Perkopa, leaving us in the lurch before an upcoming election, as he has done in the past. The strongly partisan and false narrative that Mr. Bartles Meyer spreads on social media is neither professional nor appropriate for a person entrusted to perform fair and secure elections in an unbiased, nonpartisan manner. Reported gen, reporter Jen Feifield of Vote Beat identified multiple false election claims made by Bartle Meyer, including, quote, "Please join me by posting Trump won by a landslide," unquote. Fox's recent $787.5 million defamation lawsuit, along with the abrupt firing of Tucker Carlson yesterday, should give you a clue as to the severity of consequences for public deception. It should be clear by now to folks like Bob Bartles Meyer, Tom Crosby, Peggy Judd and David Stevens, that these repeatedly disproven lies and debunked theories have no place in county government, and there are very real consequences when they are publicly and unabashedly promoted. I'd also like to mention that I attended our county's logic and accuracy test on April 12. I'd also like to mention that I attended our county's logic and accuracy test on April 12th and can report that our tabulating machines were 100% correct, matching perfectly with the hand count as has been the case for many years now in Cochise County. There is absolutely nothing wrong with our voting machines or tabulators. Recorder Stevens was present at this test, as was Mr. Karwaczka, his deputy Ms. Gilman and the Cochise County Republican Chair, among others. All of us witnessed the keen accuracy of over 1,100 ballots being machine counted. As Elections Manager Daniel Vertrees explained the details of the process. I invite all voters, including our county supervisors who have doubts about our voting machines to attend a logic and accuracy test and take personal interest to learn more about our sound election processes. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is David Penrose. I believe he's present. You go to the microphone, give your name and address, David, and you have three minutes.
David Penrose, I reside in Bisbee and I have questions about the gentleman being nominated as our Elections Director. First of all, our system in this county, the election system works pretty well. Generally, we have a three to two Republican majority. And yet a minority, a portion of the of those voting for the Republicans seem to distrust the system. What's been going on in this county the past couple of months is making those of us who consider ourselves Democrats distrust what you folks are doing. Hire an election director who has as a civilian questioned the mean supported the big lie, as they call it, put forward by entertainment companies posing as news organizations as the recent settlement between Dominion and Fox has shown. And yet still having those arguments put forward even today when they're well disproved doesn't lead to support to trust in the current leadership of this county. The fact that this gentleman is heavily to the right. And we have an Elections Director, I mean, we have a recorder in charge of the election system who has also openly questioned the current election system. You're you're taking the system that you've already in the past couple of months weighed heavily out of balance and now you're putting 100 pound weight on that balance on the on the right side of it, making even more unbalanced. Please get the get this system balanced, make our election department truly neutral. Thank you.
Okay, next one is Tamara Birch in person.
My name is Tamara Birch. I live in Bisbee and I've been an active voter since 1980. I thank you, the Board and Madam Chair and all the county elected officials and the public for listening and having input today. I oppose the hiring of Bob Bartles Meyer for the position of Elections Director. Cochise citizens have the right to know who this person is and how he was recruited, who was involved in the interviews. I know the qualifications. I read the application. He doesn't even have a college degree. Yes, he has some experience in elections, but I don't think he's is the most qualified. I don't know who the other people that applied for it. I don't I what my questions are many. Were all the Boards of Supervisors notified and briefed on his personal background prior to him being chosen? What were the questions? I read some questions online, but he didn't even answer some of them. We couldn't even know who his employees, what they thought of his performance. It's come to light his social media postings are now available. It states that he is an election denier. He stated that 2020 elections were rigged. Social media can be a positive thing, but as we found out from Fox News and the lawsuits, it does fill people's minds with untruths and disinformation which damages our trust in our system, which I believe is full of integrity and I want the best person in our county to be or anywhere that's has experience to be elected. We cannot endure any more court cases and costs for our top tax dollars. We don't know how he would use his procedures in the Arizona manual for voting. Are we going to still have vote in mail-in votes? Are we going to have vote centers taken away? Are we again going to push more hand counting that is totally necessary and time consuming? And who's going to train these people? We, the citizens, cannot tolerate these illegal actions and I hope that the Board would consider not hiring him. Please involve public input, who in the county HR or public information people were even involved in this selection process. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Kato Daly and I believe she's here in person. Start with your name and address and you have three minutes, Kato.
I'm Kato Daly, Bisbee. Thank you for the opportunity. I don't feel that Mr. Bartles Meyer is qualified for this job. The County Elections Director job description includes administering and managing a comprehensive elections program, organizing and managing complex operations with superior attention to detail and handling and managing details, analyzing complex administrative and organizational problems, be fair and impartial in administrating the duties of the position. The minimum job requirements include bachelor's degree in public administration or related field plus five years managerial management experience, at least three years must have been in elections administration or an equivalent combination of education and or experience may be considered. So let's go through Mr. Bartles Meyer's qualifications from his job application. He does not have a college degree. He accumulated 42 credits in agribusiness from one college and 72 credits in history and political science from another. An undergraduate degree typically requires 120 credits. So no bachelor's degree in public administration or related field. Okay, so let's look at his work experience. He's been working for just one year as La Paz County Elections Director Deputy Clerk. He worked for one year 13 years ago as Doña Anna, New Mexico County Elections Director. He worked 14 years ago for a year and a half as the absentee ballot coordinator in Palm Beach, supervising three employees. On his application, when asked if these employers can be contacted, he said no. So that's three and a half years he's worked in elections, one year recently and two and a half years 13 years ago. Oh, the employers he had 13, 14 and 20 years ago can be contacted as references, he said again, but not his recent ones. There's also a 12-year gap in his work history. He does not say what he did for the 12 years between his current job and his last job in 2010. The job application lists considerable skill in using computer databases. He lists under other qualifications that he's skilled in Microsoft Word, Excel and intermediate PowerPoint. So he's not qualified for this very important job and he does not meet the high standards of Cochise County employees. I urge you not to hire him. Thank you.
Hey, I think I gave the information on the people not speaking. I'll make sure I haven't gotten any more of it. Okay. Any of the information that's come up that you want to rebut or address, Mr. Stevens, since you are making this recommendation?
Go ahead.
Well, then could I ask you a question? It seems as though when at least Ms. Judd was notified or asked questions about who was going to be the Elections Director that you had made contact with her. Was there a reason why I've been totally left out of the system? Did you talk with Mr. with Supervisor Judd and Supervisor Crosby?
I talked with Supervisor Judd and Crosby on numerous occasions. I don't recall talking about this specifically. The way that I understand the IGA set up was I was supposed to post an interview and present to the Board, which I did, the candidate that I chose. One question did come up. There were two other candidates. Neither one of them had any elections experience whatsoever. So the the obvious choice was Mr. Bartles Meyer. If you approve him, then great. If not, then we'll keep driving on.
Any Board members have any comments or questions at this time?
Yeah, I don't think it is a necessarily a minority viewpoint that elections need to be carefully handled. I believed the presenters that we've heard from regarding the lack of accreditation of laboratories certifying the election machines. The Secretary of State could have refuted the concerns of those who I referred to as Paul Rice et al. in his request for information from last August, but those concerns were not addressed by the former Secretary of State. And I also believed Mr. Dan Le chance and his concerns regarding the chain of custody concerns of an all mail-in election. So I don't I don't think it's a minority concern. Everybody should be concerned about election issues.
And what does that have to do with Mr. Bartles Meyer?
I'm sure that he has concerns that elections are handled accurately and honestly as well.
Okay, any comments, Ms. Judd?
Hi, so I I knew that David had come up with someone. I didn't know who it was. He just said, I think I picked someone. I didn't know who it was. I found out who it was from the news. So from news news people questioning me, which is probably similar to how you found out who it was. So somehow people in the news media get a hold of names and things that we don't know about yet. That's been my experience.
Any other comments? We do have a motion and a second.
I thought we might have a chance to listen to Mr. Bartles Meyer.
Could you say that again, Ms. Judd? I didn't hear.
I thought we might have a chance to listen to Mr. Bartles Meyer speak.
Okay, Mr. Bartles Meyer, would you come to the microphone, please?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And for the record, we always ask the person speaking to give their name and address. So the record is complete. Thank you.
Bob Bartles Meyer, La Paz County, Arizona. Some of the comments that have been made has been distorted. Just like a lot of the issues in the media has been distorted through lies and misunderstandings and twisted remarks. As a private citizen between 2016 and 2021, I I am at the liberty to express my opinion. I was not an Elections Director at that time. But if you will look into my past and ask La Paz County how I served them as Elections Director, you will understand and find out that I was the most transparent individual Elections Director and I have high marks from the county administrator who supervised me, all three Board Supervisors, members of the Supervisors, the County Attorney and also the Clerk of the Board. I do not have a Bachelor of Science degree. That is true. But I have 144 hours of college credit in political science and agribusiness. I was elected at the age of 21 as the youngest county clerk in the state of Missouri. Did you know that? I have 23 years of experience as a county clerk and election authority in the state of Missouri. I was selected to by the Department of Justice to observe elections in Albania, Kosovo, Macedonia. So do you think I do not have experience? I have over 30 years of experience. Can you tell me who has more experience? I doubt if you can find one. I have the utmost respect for Lisa Mara. When I came to La Paz County, she was very helpful in addressing some issues and questions I had. Therefore, I think I can bring value to the operations in Cochise County, which is a larger jurisdiction than La Paz County. I hate to leave La Paz County because they have been very good to me. But I feel like that I can be an asset to the people of Cochise County. My wife is a former state representative in Missouri and was term limited for eight years. Re-elected four times. I was elected to or I was elected six times in Lawrence County, Missouri, which is a population of 35,000 and 22,000 registered voters. I was absentee ballot coordinator in Palm Beach County, Florida, which has almost 1 million people registered. I want I want transparency. I want integrity. And I tell you, whenever I was a little boy, my dad would take me to the bank in my hometown of Mount Vernon, Missouri. And the teller said, boy, I tell you that Bobby, which I was called, sure asked a lot of questions. I am the type of person that asks questions because I want things right. And if I see something wrong, I will spell it out to you. And I want to be honest and fair in every election. Do you think that there is a perfect election? No, there is never a perfect election because you deal with human error. I'm not against machines. I am for machines. I think they are 99.9% accurate. But I do want a hand count to compare to the machine count to make sure that all is correct. And I believe that you should have at least a percentage of what the Elections Procedures Manual calls for. The percentage of hang counts of the four races that are on the ballot. And that does not include all the ballots. That is a percentage of the ballots to make sure that the hang count is comparable to the machine count.
I I don't want to butt in, but if you could keep your remarks to what you are trying to rebut that someone said about you, it would be.
Well, I am. They say that I'm not experienced, that I'm not qualified. And I'm trying to stress to you, Madam Chair, that I am qualified. Do you not think that 30 years of experience is not qualification for it?
Madam Chair, I'm very satisfied.
Ms. Judd is satisfied with your your comment. You have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. If there are no further comments, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Care votes no and the ayes accepted and so it is so ordered. Item number 12.
Madam Chair, I move we approve an assurance agreement.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve an assurance agreement extension to May 9, 2028, for the Oaks subdivision with Pioneer Title Agency, Inc. as trustee under trust number 319061 for Castle &amp; Cook, Arizona, Inc. as beneficiary of trust number 319061.
All right, Madam Chair.
I got a second. Can I hear it, Ms. Judd?
I second that.
Okay, now we have a second, go ahead.
All right, Madam Chair and Board members, before you is a request to extend the, extend the assurance agreement for the Oaks subdivision. The assurance agreement is the guarantee that all subdivision improvements will be completed before lots are released. So, just a little background on the, on the site here. So 113 lots are on, on 503 acres, average lot size is 4.4 or 5 acres, it is currently zoned RU4, the growth area is D, and the plan designation is rural density, and it's part of the Southern San Pedro Valley area plan. Little background, so the original final plan and assurance agreement was recorded back in May 9 of 2007, there have been previous extensions in 11, 14, 17, and 2020. To date, 29 lots have been released, and that's primarily in Phase 1, that represents 26% of the subdivision improvements that have been completed. 84 lots remain secured under the assurance agreement, and if approved, the assurance agreement would expire on May 9 of 2028. So here's an aerial view, all, everything that's shaded in yellow would represent the lots that are within the Oaks subdivision. Of course, it's bordered on the west by State Route 92, the main entrance is Three Canyons, and to the south, primarily to date, there's five homes that have been constructed, and those are south of Three Canyons, which is in Phase 1 of this subdivision. Here's the phasing map, and like I'd mentioned, most of the lots and the lots that have been released are in Phase 1. As you know, the, the Board may consider five factors when you determine if you'd want to extend the assurance agreement. It looks at taxes, it looks at economics, it looks at what percentage of, of phasing has been completed for the subdivision, like I said, so we're at 26%. With all of this, I did want to mention too, so Liberty Water does serve the subdivision, I know that's come up in the past, and the water infrastructure is in place, and the subdivision is being maintained very well. And, and with that, staff would recommend to the Board that we do extend this assurance agreement to May 9 of 2028. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board, comments?
I would just note that water does run downhill, and if you've got straight roads going downhill, you can have a potential problem flooding, and that has been a problem before this Board before, and I hope that you'll take particular attention to that and make sure that there's storm drains diverting it away from people's property. As much as we like all the environmental stuff about slowing the water down and all the kind of stuff, there are limitations.
Yes, noted.
Ms. Judd, do you have any comments, questions?
I do not, I don't, thank you.
Well, my comment certainly would be to recommend approval, we, we want, we want development in Cochise County, and we want it done in a good way, and this company has been offering that. The one thing I've, I've not liked as much as others is the fact that they open the gates, and so we would have to take care of the roads in there, but it's on the books, and it makes it possible, if you create the roads, and you dedicate them to the public, and you build them to the right standard, then we can take them on, as long as they're not closed gates. So I guess that's the only, only thing I've had against, you know, these properties that are developing. So it'd be my intention to vote to, to recommend approval. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we do have a motion, and a second, so I'm going to call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, number 13, let's have a motion about the self-sufficiency grants.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the renewal of Family Self-Sufficiency Grant Agreement, FSS23AZ5152-01-00, awarded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to the Housing Authority of Cochise County, and the amount of $72,000 effective January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Baca, Housing Director.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm here today to request approval of our renewal grant for the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. We've been administering this program since 2005, and the, the program is designed for self-sufficiency among those who are participating in our rental assistance programs. So it's, it's designed to, for, for those who are in a position to improve their income, increase their income, they're, they together meet with the Family Self-Sufficiency Coordinator and design a roadmap to, to improve their, their income. As their income increases, so does their portion of the rent. That amount then goes into a savings account, it's called an escrow account for the family, and, and the family receives that upon graduation, whatever the balance is, in the, in the escrow account. Typically, the contract is five years, however, if the goals are met prior to that, they can graduate early. The, the stipulations are that they can no longer be on public assistance or cash assistance. So we currently have 45 families earning escrow on our program. HUD has also this year increased our funding from 58,420 to 72,000. If, if this is, if this grant isn't renewed, then we're still contractually obligated to, to continue to put money into the escrow account until the contracts are up with the families.
Okay.
So that's all I have for my presentation, I'd be happy to address any questions or comments that the Board may have.
I, I personally think it's a great program, I had the honor of attending one graduation, and the pride in people who have taken hold of their circumstances and put money aside and reached their goals, it was, it was really rewarding to see that, so I want to encourage that, and hoping that the, the Board will pass this. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Baca, do we have a veteran nexus in this particular program?
We, we don't have, it's, it's based on what the income is, we have had veterans graduate, as a matter of fact, when I was pulling up some statistics, I came across one veteran who even graduated with more than $16,000 in his savings account. So, and, and we've had people with their, with the money that they've received, get off the program and purchase homes, start their own businesses, finish higher education. So, so it's been very useful. And also, that, that particular veteran is also on our resident advisory board, too.
Thank you, Ms. Baca.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, Ms. Judd?
I didn't have a question, but I do have a comment. This was the single most surprising and delightful program that our county runs when I became a supervisor, and I'm glad to keep it going strong.
Thank you, Supervisor Judd.
Okay, hearing no other comments, I'm going to call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thanks, Anita.
Thank you.
State and federal legislation, I have no comments, legislature's taken off for a while, taking a deep breath, I guess. Mr. Karwatsko, you have a minister's report?
I do. Regarding the half-cent sales tax proposal for the Jail District, the ballots have been mailed out, people can mark their ballot and return it by mail, or they can drop it off at the five locations that are our service centers, and Sierra Vista, the Foothills location, Benson, Wilcox, Douglas, or in front of the Recorder's Office here in the Bisbee location. So they can do that, if they did not receive a ballot, they can contact the Recorder's Office. Also, to drop off those ballots at those locations, those ballot boxes are open Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And that would include my update at this point in time, and the election is May 16th. Thank you.
Okay, current events, District 1.
I'll pass, next.
Okay, District 2, I have no current events to report, District 3?
No, I'm going to pass.
Did she really say pass?
I really said pass.
What?
We're in a, we're in a lull.
Well, wanted to make sure, shake it, you know, all right. Next meeting is Wednesday, May the 3rd, at 1:00 PM in Executive Conference Room, it's a work session, budget for CCOM, and I'm telling you that since, since the retirement was not on our schedule, I'm going to conclude this meeting before we have a little ceremony. So, having said that, this meeting is adjourned, but you are welcome to stay.